Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to call a regular meeting of Subterráneo County Council for Tuesday, September 13th quarter. And at this time, I'm going to, not only is our veteran, Frederick L. Hoofe Jr., going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, but he's also a pastor. So at this time, I'm going to ask him to lead us in an implication as well. Will you join me in prayer? Our heavenly Father, we thank thee for the privilege that is ours to know thee, to know thy goodness, to know thy faithfulness, to know who thou art, the one who has created us and made us, the one who provides for us day by day. Thank thee, our Father, for the testimony of thy word, that even as we come to a meeting such as this, we call upon thee for wisdom and direction. For this council, we pray that thy name will be honored and glorified by their deliberation. We pray, our Father, thy blessing for each one, each member, and each family that is represented. We pray that thy care over them might reflect something of thy grace, that those who know thee not might understand and know that we do not live to ourselves, but we live by thy grace, by thy goodness. So we pray for that need, for this council, as they deliberate various problems that come their way, that thy name will be lifted up, honored, and glorified. We pray for our community. We pray for our county. We pray for our state, for our nation. We pray, our Father, as much as is possible, we might be delivered from the wickedness and the evil that is so rampant in the world today and in the larger cities of our country. We pray that in thy grace, in thy wisdom, that thou would give direction to those in authority over us, whether it be the council, whether it be on the government level, on the state, or whether it be the national level, our president, and those elected to serve us and to serve our country. We pray then that thy name, being glorified, will lead some to give consideration to thy grace. We praise thy name for who thou art, what thou hast done, and we pray this in the name of the one who died on the cross of Calvary, shedding his blood for the remission of sin. We thank thee again for what thou hast provided for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Veteran Frederick L. Hoofe Jr. served our country in the U.S. Navy from 1943 to 1946 during World War II. Thank you, sir, for your service. Reverend Frederick L. Hoofe Jr. is one of the few remaining World War II veterans living here in Subterráneo County. He currently lives in County Council District Number Five, our Councilwoman Vivian McGaney. Thank you, sir, again for your service, and I might add, I'm told he is 97 years young. I would like to say something before we pledge allegiance. It is only by God's grace that I'm here. I did nothing exceptional. I was in the Navy. I was sent for training. After training, I was sent to a shore station. All my buddies were seeing action, and I'm sitting on a shore station, twiddling my thumbs. I put in application after application for transfer. Skipper said, "Nothing doing." About the seventh time I took a transfer request in, he said, "You can come in here with another, and I put you in the brig, and you wouldn't go anywhere." He kept me there on that station till the war was over. That's by the grace of God. Really, I shouldn't be here. I told Vivian, I know a number of other people know about it. I was in a high school class, 16 fellows. One was fourth, one had a family exemption. 14 of us went in. Two of us came out. As God's grace, I'm thankful for it.
And we thankful for you.
Join me in the pledge, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Reverend, I would be privileged to be able to present this certificate to you. The community loves you, and I love you.
I'm happy to be here. What's yours?
I'm Air Force. You know, when you came here, I was one year old. That's why I just wanted to thank you. I served in Vietnam, that was.
When I came in?
I was born 1942.
Well, I was born in '25. Makes me 97. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you for the honor. I trust you all have an excellent meeting.
Thank you, sir.
I remind you, we pray for those elected to office, those who rule over us. Our church is faithful in praying, and I pray for those in authority as well. I trust you have a good meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We have a motion to approve our gem. So, Mo, Dr. Green, Mr. Baker, second your side. Reverend Mr. Baker, in a discussion, there are none in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve the amendments of our regular meeting, August 23rd, 2022.
Aye.
By Mr. Bird, seconded by Mr. Baker, in a discussion, there are none in favor, please say aye. Next item on the agenda, land use matters, ordinance amendment number 2209. Jeff, you want to do this?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman of the County Council. This is ordinance amendment 2209, and this relates to the flood damage, the county's flood damage prevention ordinance. So this is an amendment to amend relevant portions of the subterráneo county flood damage prevention ordinance to adopt the new Black River watershed maps and the associated flood insurance study revisions that become effective on October 27th of this year. This amendment will update the ordinance to make corrections and clarifications required for compliance with the NFIP, National Flood Insurance Program, and the Community Rating System Program. So this is a separate ordinance that exists outside the zoning, the county's zoning ordinance, which is what we usually present. This is the standalone ordinance with the purpose of regulating development and disturbance in specific areas, special flood hazard areas, commonly referred to as flood plains that are shown on maps produced by FEMA. So the county participates in the NFIP program. It's kind of a two-fold program that residents have the ability to access federally backed flood insurance, and in turn, the county adopts a local ordinance that regulates development within the flood plain areas that must meet minimum standards. The county's ordinance exceeds minimum standards, and we participate in the Community Rating System Program, which gives residents with flood insurance access to reduced premiums at a federal rate. So this slide just shows, it references a website, sdfloodimpact.com. This website, you can see the current effective maps and the preliminary maps or maps that are being considered. So these two slides just show a comparison. The one on the left is the effective maps, and the one on the right is the maps to be updated. And essentially, what this map update does, it's a redelineation with better topographic information. Topographic information was obtained through LiDAR technology, which the previous maps were USGS-level maps. So this is a more refined picture of the actual topo contours and flood contours, but using the same model. There wasn't a new hydraulic model done by FEMA, just a redelineation of the topos based on new data. So this is a large map update. The bold in blue shows the areas of the county that are subject to, the panels are being updated with the new maps. So this is everything, really, except for portions of the water shed that were done in 2018 that also don't have area within the Black River watershed. So again, this amendment, it's referencing the new maps and the ordinance. It's bringing the ordinance into line with the latest state model code, with just minor tweaks associated with that. Added some clarifying language concerning some requirements that were outlined in our latest CRS audit, and it's correcting some minor formatting or referencing issues that exist. With that, the planning commission heard this request. They do recommend approval. The proposed revisions have been reviewed by the state flood mitigation office for compliance with the NFIP and CRS, and they are paid it, and we recommend approval in order to remain a participant in the NFIP program.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions, subject comments?
Mr. Chairman, you and Mr. Bird were in attendance at the meeting that was held last week after two hours, Administrator. It would come over from FEMA office in Columbia, Indiana. I'm not sure Administrator wants to make any comments about that, but last I got out of that, and I'm good to go on the first reading tonight. Hoping maybe we will have something that could be done as far as maybe some hydraulic map studies, partial, not whole, compared. Just any cost would be to do a partial hydraulic map study. He told you that could be done after the fact, after we adjust the changes, and still go back and remake. Mention that, just as information for the rest of council.
We'll get you back to you, Mark. Yes, sir. So if I ask me to kind of elaborate on the meeting. So the meeting was really set up by Representative Smith's office in coordination with DNR because there's still a lot of questions, particularly those folks that lived in the Lakewood community and councils familiar, that they actually came up to one of our council meetings and expressed their concerns. So I wanted to make sure that they had a face-to-face opportunity to meet, hear the information from DNR, who's the responsible state agency for this flood information, and for them to, of course, address any concerns they might have. Couple things, I think, that came out of the meeting, and certainly others that can elaborate even more. First, that, you know, as far as these maps go, that they all recognize the county has to move forward because it has tremendous impact, not only on the Lakewood subdivision, but the entire area. So they all acknowledge, I believe, in that meeting, that they understand that now. Mr. Louis Tisdale, if y'all remember, was at our last meeting with council. He was actually there, again, kind of as the spokesperson for that group. So that part, that's aside. One of the things that, and that's one of the things that Mr. Tisdale indicated was to the group was, he recognized that this process has to move forward because it does have other impacts. But what he would, what he really challenged DNR and looked to council and looked to the state agency, particularly Representative Smith's office, which is unable to attend, was to look at the process, especially moving forward, how we might change and have more engagement or involvement or information sharing early on in the process with possibly some either surveyors or other community members that know the community better before it gets this far down the path of implementing a new map structure. And he recognized that it is a better map than what it used to be. He indicated that in the meeting, Tisdale, but it's still not perfect. And the only way to really get it better is to have a boot-on-the-ground type of survey information. What he also asked is that the state and possibly local government and maybe even the national government come up with some kind of funding source that might provide that level of survey be done through some kind of funding source, grant source, or whatever. So that part of it also, and that's what DNR was challenged. Okay, they're going to come back, present to the county and to the state offices, a cost estimate of what it would take to redelineate, if you want to call it that, the Lakewood area, because that's been identified as area with numerous errors. So yes, we're still waiting on that information from DNR. Then we will possibly review it, bring that back to council along with the state, and see if there's a desire or interest in providing another level of study on that particular area. But at this time, we have not received that information. That's kind of independent of the flood maps itself. My recommendation, based on all the information, would be that we move forward with this process, but at the same time, consider there's another option, depending on what the cost might be. And I am correct, and I said FEMA, I meant DNR. Yeah, FEMA was not there. Yeah, DNR. We moved first. We moved and probably seconded, and we have first review ordinance amendment 2209. Any further discussion? Any none in all who's in favor of having first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? On the 082209, first reading is approved. Next item on the agenda on new business is a presentation by Ms. Annie Rivers, who's the executive director of Subterráneo County Museum, Molly Fortune.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. As you know, there's a wealth of history in our county, and the mission of the museum is to preserve, promote, and interpret our local history. So when we were first contacted by the South Carolina American Revolution Sester Centennial Commission, we were thrilled about the possibility of developing a subterráneo county committee. So I am honored to interview tonight our executive director of the South Carolina American Revolution Sester Centennial Commission, Molly Fortune, who will speak more about what is going on statewide and what we can do in Subterráneo.
Thank you, Annie. She's the first person that's got it right twice in the row. How many of you were at the presentation I did down on the coast at the municipal system?
County.
Thank you. County Association. I've been working for you. I'll skip the first slide, it just introduces myself as the executive director. The governor and the legislature set up a commission to commemorate appropriately the 250th anniversary of the revolution in the state of South Carolina. It has been funded, and it is part of the plan for even more development in tourism moving forward. It's interesting to note that every state in the Union has a 250th commission. It's not just South Carolina, and it's not just New Jersey, where everybody thinks it happened. It is all across the country, including Oregon. So we have chosen to use it as a timeframe. Everybody knows the Declaration of Independence was signed on July 6th, 1776. July 4th, I don't know why I said 6, sorry. July 4th, 1776. That's not the entire war of independence. Actually, 1770, do you know what happened in 1770? Boston massacre. That sets off the tinderbox. 1783 is the final act, and what is that? That's the Treaty of Paris. Majority of the campaigns happen between 1770 and 1778. 1778, 1779, 80, they start coming south. The majority of what happens in South Carolina isn't until 1780. 1781, 1782. That's why it's important for us to have a longer period of time to look at this. We have some partners with us that are going to help us. We have the South Carolina Department of Archives and History. If you have not been down there lately, they have the first three state constitutions because we did not have a constitution. Basically, separated ourselves from Britain in the early 1760s. Guarantee that, it's absolutely amazing. We have South Carolina Parks, Work, and Tourism, which we're going to leverage for the state park systems and for their marketing dollars. And then the South Carolina Battleground Preservation Trust, which their mission is to preserve battlefields, obviously, within the state of South Carolina, and the Liberty Trail, which is completely unique to the state of South Carolina and the nation, and we'll talk about that in a minute. As a military wife, when I think of, oh, Revolutionary War, this is exactly what I think of. A bunch of people in costume walking across in maps, lots and lots of maps. Well, I can tell you that I think a flank is something you could put on a grill when you put in a burrito, okay? And that, to my commission, is like, Molly, no! But you know what? We can't just talk about the military history. We have to talk about everything else, the things that haven't been talked about. And how and who are those people? It's the women who are at home, briefing the wheat, taking care of the kids, slaughtering the animals, doing the laundry, which is that might go under your wall pole and put mid-end. They were doing this while the gentlemen were off like. You have your free and your enslaved Africans that were here. Carolina, North Carolina actually has one of the largest free African communities pre-revolution, and we've been talking to them about that history and harvesting it because several of those folks joined and came and lived permanently in South Carolina at the end. We have those that were enslaved that played massive roles in whether it was ferrying, whether it was cooking. Everybody played a role. Believe it or not, children even played a role. Lots of kids were sent to take care of horses. You know, it never dawned on me that when you have a battle and you've got all these horses, who's holding them? It's not like you park your car and you get out. Somebody's got to hold those horses and feed them, and finally it's. Kids played a huge role. Our indigenous played a huge role. The Katava, believe it or not, the Natchez were here, the Shawnee were here, and of course, the Cherokee as well. And then we have, can't have a good party, can't have a good fight without the loyalists. And believe it or not, the loyalists, don't just think of the British soldiers, think of your neighbor. The loyalists were your neighbors. They were everyday people that you went to church with and you lived with. We have to tell those stories about why they chose their side, what was their passion. History is not like this. It's very deep, and it's very complex, and it's very complicated. And we want to tell the complicated and ugly stories that need to come out to celebrate South Carolina and the role we played, that every single person that was sitting here in South Carolina played, okay? How we're going to do that is through three things. Education, we have to teach our children about this. Yes, you get it in the sixth grade and the eighth grade, but if you move here like my children did from Georgia, you're not yet learning anything. We have got to put it back in the school systems as far as understanding the accomplishments of every single person that played a role. And we need to educate our adult citizens as well. I can guarantee you, a lot of you don't know some of the stuff that we've uncovered about the fact that Marion Sumter and Williamson were all up at the Cherokee War in one house together at one point in time, and that was the only time all of them were together. Finding those stories is amazing, and we have to keep doing that. Heritage tourism, like I said, the 250th is coming, every state's doing something. Yes, are there going to be fireworks on July 4th? Absolutely. But people want to see, and they want to go and be where their ancestors were. Why, Gneal would do so incredible right now. And I love that picture of the Indian actors in front of the British painting. But they're coming, and we need to make sure that we are ready in each of our counties to accept these folks. Our restaurant's doing well. What do we need to do about heads in bed? I used to say butts in seats. I used to be, I can honestly say, I used to be the African American Berry Opera House or in there. But, and I love that, working at the Sumter Opera House. But people come, and they do come, and they're going to come. So are we ready, and do we have places for them to be? Now, mind you, yes, Charleston and Camden had four major battles. Out of 400 battles that were fought in South Carolina, where are the rest fought? In the back country, out in our rural areas. We've got to get people out of Charleston and out of Camden and bring them into our rural areas to see what amazing land saves we have, what stories we have, and what towns are out there they can spend their money in and go home in. So we've asked for leaders, SAR, DAR. I just learned this week that the largest African-American DAR chapter is actually right across the line in Charlotte. Do not ever make an assumption that you don't have a relative or a patriot or a loyalist that can fit in any of these categories. I was over in Lee County this morning, and their director of the NAACP actually jumped on the bandwagon and is going to help us. You know, a cartographer, historians, archaeologists, if you are an Indiana Jones at heart, please consider helping us. Libraries, economic development, and that kid from high school who can't stand history is because we teach history and numbers and dates, and we don't give them the technology or the skills to actually go and research and dig and find it and make it personal. I can tell you, taking my 13-year-old with me to your county, and I met with the Katava Nation, and she got back in the car and she said, "I did not know we had Indian reservations for South Carolina." We've got to start teaching that stuff. And I bet you didn't know this, and I learned this the week before, living with the Cherokee for three days, the Cherokee and South Carolina were not removed. They had already made a deal with the government that they could stay on their lands. I was taught that everybody left. We've got to tell those stories because these people are still with us. But it's going to be fun, I'm saying it a lot. You need to create your 250th, which Annie has done. She's done a fantastic job. There's a lot of questions, some are very excited. We make a presentation so you understand, you can ask us questions, you can challenge us, and then, you know, your resolutions, and the grant funding is available. The legislature takes this so seriously that we had $9 million in grant funding to spend on economic development projects for each county. Each county has their own 250th. I know that Lee and Sumter are working together on the economic development package. There's an opportunity right there. With good economic development, you have the ability to have industry come in because it's a quality of life. We have grants for research. You don't know what you have here? We have a grant for that. You want to publish a book about Thomas Sumter and give it to every fourth grader for the next 10 years, we can help you with a publication grant, signage grant, activities, you name it, you think about it, and we will try to help you fund that. It is on our website under the local communities, and then I do have a hard copy that Annie will have. We talked about the Liberty Trail a little bit. The Liberty Trail is a project between the South Carolina Battleground Trust and the American Battlefield Trust. And the American Battlefield Trust, as the 250th came upon us, said, "We need to get some of the leading historians in the United States together and pick one state to really talk about the revolution and how pivotal it was." So these folks went behind closed doors, and everybody was taking bets. Who is it going to be? It's going to be Philadelphia, it may be Boston, Philadelphia, what's it going to be? I thought it actually was going to be town. They came back out and said, "South Carolina, more battles, more skirmishes, more stories, and more people involved, diversity than any other state." And Liberty Trail was born. It is a driving trail, it's extraordinarily unique, it's an app on your phone, it's free, look it up, Liberty Trail. It is a unique driving experience through this entire state of South Carolina. They have already spent $4 million on this, and when you pull it up, it's augmented reality, you can see exactly what that battlefield looked like. And it can also say, "I hear your kids are hungry, the local diner is three blocks down." Or, "Your wife is into quilting, she can go over here." It's a holistic approach to having people come through these areas. We started out with 39, we're up to about 108 sites already that want to be included on the Liberty Trail. And there is a video, I'm not, I did not have, I did not, well, apparently I did, but it's a long video. Do you want to watch it? Do you want to watch it? Is that what you need? Was it a dream? No, stop it. Those enraged... There we go, stop. You can look it up online. It's got a beautiful entrance to it.
I liked it already.
Do you like it already? The woman who is the narrator is from Georgetown, but this is the, this again, is something that our state is very deep in. They want the counties to succeed. I'm here to answer questions, and we just really want y'all on board.
Great presentation.
Oh, thanks. Well, thank you. Are there any thoughts, concerns? I usually say prayer requests.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a thought.
Yes, ma'am.
You've triggered some social studies memories in me. I recognized the picture of Lewis Wheatley.
Yes.
And then I, a little-known fact, the Christmas Addicts was the first one to follow in the Boston Massacre.
Yes.
On March the 17th of 1770. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And I'll be so excited to see all this come to fruition.
It's just been amazing to me. The only segregated unit was in Rhode Island, and South Carolina had the only all-Jewish regiment. And we have a lot, a lot of diversity going for us. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, we have on the floor Resolution Number 2207. Here's a resolution supporting the South Carolina American Revolution Centennial Commission in recognizing and establishing the Sumter County 250 Community Committee. Let's have a program. Then we'll be properly executing it, and we adopt Resolution Number 2207. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Resolution 2207 is passed. Under Old Business, ordinance number 22977, third reading. Mr. Bryan?
Mr. Chairman, it might be addressing here. If Mrs. Blanding would put on the screen the map that shows where this season is going to go, I think that'll provide information that County Council was wanting. There were two proposed routes. Each starts with a hole on West Mark. One would have been a trench on the right side of the driveway, sort of that picture. The other is a boring, that's the dash line, not the top line, that leads the road forward to the driveway, then under the driveway back to the cell tower. And that's the route we're going to use to tentacle by these, so that the power company electricity back to that cell tower.
Do you have any questions? Any questions? Mr. Bryan? Hearing none? Move to third. But moved and seconded it. We have third reading of ordinance 22977. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Same. Come now, the committee reports public safety, Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. This afternoon, we heard from the EMS director to update us on changes that have been made to improve services to our constituents across Sumter County. And what we've learned is that service is up, morale is up, and folks are happy with the new changes that have been made. So in communities, you'll see a lot more presence, a lot more service, and we were happy to receive that report from our EMS director. We also visited a little bit more about the issue on Pike Road. We're also having some discussions, possibly between our county administrator and the city of Sumter, about possibly engaging in some temporary remedy while we explore some long-term remedy. And there were a couple of other items of interest that we will be pursuing and report back to you on the next council meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Monthly reports, Mrs. Blanding.
You have the Board of Zoning Appeals information in your packet. Also, you have the Fire Fighters Banquet information there, that if any council member plans to go, I'd really like to know as quickly as possible. Also, you have information from Pantry Hall where an evening of jazz with Jasmine. Anyone interested, please let me know that as well. And a building report in the package as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mixon.
Mr. Chairman, council members, good evening again. While Ms. Blanding brings us the information we have to share tonight, two quick items. First, really going to update council and the community on the Capropene Sales Tax Initiative. You have at your, you have at your desk a copy of the pamphlet that the county has put together. As you know, the county has the authority to provide educational information, so that's what that pamphlet provides, is a list of every Capropene project on the list, and also this mirroring the referendum question itself, so the public will be informed as to what that might look like. But you have a copy of that, and we have a number of other copies that we'll be sharing with the community over the next couple of months. And matter of fact, I was telling this period earlier, we're going to run so fast, we went ahead and put a second order in for some of this pamphlet. So if you have any need of those, please let us know, we're happy to share that with you, that you might share that with some of your constituents as they're working through the community. But also, if you recall, at the last meeting, Councilman Washington brought up a very good point, that we should use this platform, County Council meetings, as another opportunity to share information about the Capropene Sales Tax projects. It was mentioned and considered that we do it by district, but then we recognized that we only have four meetings prior to the election, and we have seven districts. So we thought we would go another route, and actually, just coincidentally, that the Capropene Sales Tax is actually broken up into four categories, so we would actually share the information about each category at each one of our council meetings. Again, this is just another opportunity to share information about Capropene Sales Tax. Take that. I'm smashing forward. I'm moving here, but not there. You got it?
Back to you. You there?
Okay, yeah, I think that's one of them. All right, so, one slide in back. There we go. So that's four, four categories: Public Safety, Public Safety, Quality of Life, and Public Affairs. These are the four categories that the Capropene Sales Tax projects are committed to, a hundred and seventeen million dollars worth of projects, so quite a few projects, and we will get through those. We'll take, again, each one of them, council meetings, and here on, we'll actually address one of the areas. Tonight, we're going to talk about public safety. This, coincidentally, is the number one project category in the Capropene Sales Tax. The first couple of projects over this will be from this particular area. And those are public safety, we have county fire trucks, emergency radios, city fire trucks, forensic center, and Stadium Road Fire Station. Just want to do those really quick, the third rail slide actually demonstrates what those projects are. Number one on the project list is the county replacement of county fire trucks, twenty-three fire trucks throughout Sumter County. As you can see, the average age of those trucks is twenty-four years. This particular truck that you see in the picture, I believe is out at the Bose sighting, the Bose sighting fire station, it's actually still functional, but as you can see, it's getting pretty tough condition after about nineteen eighty-something model truck. So you can imagine the maintenance cost on that, but again, our tent here will be replaced. You can see five custom engines, six commercial engine pagers, and three service trucks, that is throughout the entire county. Total cost to this particular area is estimated at ten million dollars. Public safety, emergency radio system and pagers. This is a communication system for our entire emergency service, EMS, fire, and police and sheriff. So it's very vital to our operations. It is required that we maintain most up-to-date radio system technologies are changing. We anticipate that the new technology will change in probably year three of the Capropene Sales Tax, and in preparation for that, we estimate it will cost us eight point eight million dollars to put in a new emergency radio system, as well as pagers and additional three hundred thousand. Also, in this, this is the cities being for some new fire trucks. They have fewer trucks, but they are more costly, so they have four city trucks at two point eight million dollars. This will be primarily at the big fire station over on, excuse me, on Lafayette, as well as, I believe, I don't know, Alice Drive, with two trucks, three, four trucks, that is really Sumter. And we also have the construction of a new forensic center to replace the old and outdated forensic center that we currently operate behind the sheriff's office. This is actually part of the old detention center many years ago, this is the rehab. It's not really suitable for today's technology, so our tent here will be to spend two and a half million dollars to build a new forensic center, which will be located right behind the current sheriff's office, where we toward our old detention center and beside our gas pumps. So our gap of that will be. And the last one is a renovation for the city of Sumter for a new fire station out on Stadium Road. They had had a number of issues at that particular site for some years now, so they're pretty much dealing with this, pretty strong renovation for that particular site. This also services, the fire station office also services the southwestern portion of Sumter County, so Pimwood, that area. They get quite a few calls from this particular station, so I'm excited about that project and that three million dollars. That pretty much covers all of the projects that we have in public safety. Any questions, counsel?
Any questions, comments, Mr. Washington?
Mr. Chairman? I just think that all of these projects that our county administrator just laid out are basic services, projects that will benefit all of Sumter County. And I appreciate the committee and the county administrator identifying these needs and addressing these needs. Particularly, the improvements will affect residents out in the rural areas. The new equipment will certainly help get services to them quickly, and that's greatly appreciated. So commendable job, public safety piece.
Thank you, sir. Last, I would just like to remind counsel that we have, the Chamber of Commerce has committed to beaming out marketing branch for this particular effort. So I've been in numerous meetings with their leadership, their board of directors. They are working on the campaign now, setting up contracts for some marketing pieces, so they're keeping us fully aware of that. But a lot of folks are already asking for when the information will start rolling out. I expect it'll be heavy in October, as the schedule that I saw. You'll see some TV marketing pieces, as well as some billboard activities, local media, newspapers, and such, so all that'll be rolling out in October, but just wanted you to be aware that there is a whole nother campaign going on for public information, as well as a campaign to vote against one.
Before you, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that you mentioned we have a hundred and seventeen million dollars worth of contract, but is the reason why we didn't put that figure in this brochure out?
It is actually, it's in the category, just part of the fine print, that's actually, yes, sir, it's hard to identify, but that's the way it's going to look on the referendum, just on the very back.
It's on the back page, counsel.
Yes, and it actually talks about the bond, the bandit, the bond anticipation note as well, because that's part of the referendum question. Mr. Bryan worked closely with Ms. Jefferson, working through that process of how the actual referendum is going to look like. The hard copy, as a matter of fact, we had to pay an additional cost this year because of the size of the ballot question itself, for the hard copies. So it's lengthy, but that's the way Blanding was set up, and it does cover all that in clear detail, if somebody wants to read through that whole document.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to go back to the committee reports. I skipped over the report from council members on other meetings, trainings, and all conferences, and I know Mr. Washington had a meeting with our new superintendent that he wanted to report out. Mr. Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As this council is aware, I raised some issues relating to the school district and meeting with them on issues of concern to all council members. I think every council member has just a little bit of rural areas in their district, probably except the chairman, but the chairman has been very interested in rural areas as well, and has made that public. And so I promised counsel that I would come back once I met with the superintendent, and I want to thank the councilman from Highway 378, Councilman Bacon, for joining me in that meeting, and I want counsel to know that we had a very good meeting, and the meeting centered around his plan for rural schools. As you know, a lot of us have had some concern about rural schools and funding and how things have been going, and so we wanted to make sure the new superintendent understood that we were interested in seeing an improvement, and it was a very good meeting. And just to share with you, one of the areas that we talked about, as you know, Rattin Creek Elementary School is the school in the most northern part of Sumter County, right before you reach the Crusher Line. There is not another elementary school in that area. And so we've talked about some improvements there, just a few I'll share with you. Security cameras for the school, school dehumidifiers, outdoor basketball equipment, updated playground equipment, field trip transportation funding. And this one is of particular interest, a STEAM program, not STEM program, but a STEAM program, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And the other interesting piece is that we requested a partnership with local businesses to introduce career fields and to help provide a more rigorous and skills-based curriculum, highlighting employability skills such as teamwork, communication, and presentation skills, in addition to agricultural program. I want to report to council members that the new superintendent received all of those suggestions and requests very positively, and agreed to secure those things for the Rattin Creek and the Remer community, as he thinks those things are important as well, because he is coming from a rural district and understands the struggle in rural areas. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to come back to council and give you a report on that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Any other... I'll pick it back on in a minute, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that came out of the meeting would be very informative, but one of the things that really stood out, took me as a shock, was when the superintendent said that they have employees that are working that only make twelve thousand dollars a year. And that really shocked me. So I'm just hoping that, and I'm mentioning him, how we can go about raising that, and who would be responsible for raising that. And I mentioned to him how, when we talked about county employees, that we looked at the fact that we had county employees that were making low income, and we made an adjustment where we had a bottom ceiling that they would make no less than a certain amount of money. And I think that that needs to be done, but in order to give them the money that they need and the salaries that they need, because these people are key, even though they're not teachers, they're playing a key role when they're getting up every morning, I think, going out and preparing meals for our kids, who, another surprise, was that sixteen of our schools were Title I schools, low-income schools, so they have free and reduced lunch. So you have people going there early in the morning, preparing those meals for these kids. So I'm just hoping... So, I'm just hoping that when we think about funding in the future for our school district, we consider the fact that we do have employees that are working every day, doing a valuable job, and only making twelve thousand dollars a year. Thank you.
Any other council members?
Mr. Chair, I, this is not a meeting, uh, per se, uh, however, I have been contacted a lot recently by, um, community residents, um, in, um, areas, and, um, I don't know, something happened since that, um, flood in twenty fifteen, uh, the, the roads, uh, and, um, for me to have to tell them that because their roads are private roads in the county, um, it's limited as to what they can do, it's so hard for me to do that. And the reason why is because, um, I can remember, um, growing up in community and riding the school bus myself on dirt roads, and, but over time, those roads were eventually paved. And, um, and so, whatever process that was effective then, I really do think that as, um, county council persons and, um, and local government, that we, it's time for us to try to find a way to include those roads and, and reach out to those people who are hurting. Um, one in particular that we, that, um, is kind of, is very heavy on my heart, was, um, a road, um, that off of Queen Chapel, and there are several residents, uh, living there. It's not like somebody had a, a piece of land way off the road and decided to build it and their lane got bad. But these people have lived on this road for many years, and they are roads, um, that I saw up in, it's not even my, in my district, uh, like those, uh, Skyhawk Lane of the, the, um, remembered area. The, um, maybe our motor later or something could never get in, but they cannot afford the heavy equipment that it takes to prepare, uh, the roads, even to put, um, Kershaw Line or whatever. But, um, I'm just asking you all to think about it and help us, help me as a representative of those areas to find, have a good answer for the people, that we are able, we are trying, trying to get some help for them on their roads. They have funerals and can't even get people, um, get their hearse and to get, pick up their deceased, and I think that we really need to try to help people living in conditions like that. They, these, uh, they are the least, and I just feel like that the strength of a county depends on the weakest link, and there are some weak links up there that we really need to try to scale. Thank you for it. Yeah, please.
Mr. Chairman, any, any chance we might be able to appoint a subcommittee to work with county administrator and legal to begin looking at how we might begin addressing some of that?
I don't necessarily think that we need a subcommittee, we've already got the committees in place, uh, but that's something that we can certainly look at.
Would that be land? Land use?
Public work.
Public work?
Public work.
So maybe we can have a public works meeting and maybe begin the discussion about that, because I have the same problem in my head in my area.
You all too.
Yeah.
Four hundred miles, I got a call yesterday, about, in a mile, three hundred.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Coming down to the public comment portion of our agenda, citizens' desire to speak for limited, no more than three minutes. Congress, let me make a few comments. Anyone wishing to speak to county council, please proceed to the podium to state your name for the record.
Uh, gals, gentlemen, county members, guests? My name is George Bates, I live in Webb's Bay. As you all know, from my various attendances, I'm a very strong proponent of law and order. However, over the years that I've been coming here, I've been asking county council for, um, improving the staffing, equipment, and officers out in the field. Uh, there's a number of, uh, unfunded, funded, missing, uh, deputies. That last I heard, it may have changed, I don't know. I'm sure, or guess, and I guess I'm sure, that the manning is developed from either the population of the county and the square miles, or both. What's authorized was actually in boots, out on the job. Counties are looking, you know, a little bit depressed in their, I mean, the communities, I'm sorry, are just looking a little depressed in how they look and the trash, uh, in the yards, and it's a, it's an individual responsibility, yes, but we have, I believe, a codes enforcement section that should be going around and asking people to clean it up. I don't know if they have any in codes or not, I'm not sure. And finally, thank you for the update on some of the roads in the county. However, I would also like to address the ones that the county, county isn't responsible for, that are in such disrepair. Can we light the old proverbial fire with these other agencies to get these roads on some repair priorities? And thank you very much for your time. Y'all have a blessed day. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Anyone else?
Good evening, council, Sumter County Council members. Brenda Williams is my name. I represent the family unit incorporated, I go on a secret nonprofit charitable organization here in Sumter. Uh, I appreciate every opportunity to come before the council. Right now, we are, uh, involved with several things in the community. Our focus is on improving the lives and well-being of people who live in poverty and despair. Uh, one, uh, project that we're working on is in a, um, agreement with, uh, one of our partners, Mr. Tyler Dunlap, businessman here in town. Uh, we've been working with Dunlap years in the impoverished areas in Sumter County for years. Right now, uh, we, like I might move the chair and say, there's an urgency of now. There are people getting killed trying to cross that highway, seventy-six, seventy-eight. Um, and I accidentally found out that there was a store there. I had no idea. It was a store, and you all represented that today, right by the Sumter, uh, seven days of administration. But anyway, we reached out to the RTA, San Tabor Green RTA, about having routes in that area. Free fairs, routes, it's advertised on the RTA's website. They have free fairs Monday through Friday, nine to five, excuse me, six to eight, I bet. Um, but anyway, they have free buses. We want the RTA just to go in that area, pick up people, carry them downtown to downtown Sumter, carry them to the pharmacy, drop them off at Walmart, just have a route. We, uh, issued them that into the RTA a few weeks ago, and unfortunately, so far we've had no response. Uh, we would like to have that store, uh, community store. It's not a panacea, but it's something that people could go to, and not just children, they also go there to buy things like toilet tissue and feminine hygiene products, et cetera, to go to rich. You wouldn't imagine the simple things that people have no access to. So, we want to get the RTA, they have bus routes going, we want. Lone Dollar General, I contacted them officially. Family Dollar, Young's Market, about five other big businesses wrote requests, please come to Sumter, there's a food desert. And I told about the people who have been killed crossing the highway, no response whatsoever. And so, again, I thank you for the opportunity. Please remember that there are indigenous people, a lot of them, in Sumter County, in the city of Sumter, and we must, by God's grace, help them. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Good evening, um, county council members and all the citizens who are gathered here. My name is Jackie Hughes. Concerning the flood zone program, reminded me of something I have wondered about since the flood in October two thousand fifteen. I live by the trussel on the railroad tracks for trains going towards Pinewood. The flooding that occurred in October two thousand fifteen caused all the flooding around Second Mills, Swan Lake, and the contributaries that go into that area. All that water has to go under that trussel. The flooding occurred because all that water couldn't get under the trussel. That is, until the water started washing out, uh, started going over the railroad tracks, it ended up taking the dirt, um, thirty, um, under the railroad track, were thirty-five, thirty-seven cross ties on one side and twenty-seven cross ties on the other side. The question is, can a, um, can the green swamp be cleaned out, or up, I don't, I guess you would clean it out. I have a video of a tree being washed away. Trees would end up on the McCray's Mill side of Kingsbury, um, Bridge, Road Bridge. I think that would be the north side, whatever, I think it would be the north side. Those tree, trees could take out the bridge on Kingsbury Road. So, all that debris that was, was washed out once that flooding went under the trussel, it's all there between the trussel and Kingsbury School. And I just wonder, like, what's happening to it, but if we had another flood, I, I don't know if it can be cleaned out, but sure would be nice to do this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Tasha? Please go ahead.
Good evening, council. I am Tasha Gardner. Um, just piggybacking off of what the gentleman said, I was wondering, is it possible for city and county councils to come together and form a codes enforcement board? He's correct, county council only had two board, um, two co- enforcement agents that were through the sheriff's department, and Sumter County, as you know, is a vast area to cover. I was just thinking that if both city and county were together and put in place twenty to twenty-five agents, with each of them covering the whole Sumter area, to identify dilapidated homes, overgrown properties, and streets that are in disarray, and put them into a database, once that's done, then it's just a matter of maintaining and making sure that the letters go out, that property owners are contacted, and find or responsible for keeping it clean, because it is an eyesore for businesses, and it does slow down economic development for companies that are coming into Sumter, and it also drives down property value for those that are, um, lifetimers, I call them. Um, in my area, my mom had been on her street for forty-two years, and on our street, we have ten homes that are rental properties that are owned by the same person, and that they do not have the landscaping, we have problems with litter, we have problems now with shooting in the areas. So, we do have a lot of issues that we have transient people come in, but I think if we have the codes enforcement that we need, that when people don't keep their property clean, they know they're going to get fined for that, it would put a little bit of fire on them to keep those property clean. And, again, because Sumter County is so vast and so dense and so in those rural areas, that it, two people cannot do it. It's unfair, it's unreasonable to ask, it also puts two county officers that we need in field desperately doing cleanup work. So, I think a joint board and funding for that on part of equally for city and county to get the manpower needed, just to get it under control, it can be better managed, and that we can do what needs to be done for Sumter as a whole. Thank you.
I would like to, out of the few seconds I had left, I have an apology to make to the ladies, because I did not know the ladies were going to speak. I should have let them go first. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, any chance that that might be referred to the litter committee? I know they were doing some, I call it folkswell stuff.
Well, yeah, but also, I'll talk to Ms. Gardner now, it's, it's more to it than that. I have introduced, uh, the South Carolina Association of Counties, uh, for them to try, it, it has been in queue in the legislature for the last couple of years. You know, Tasha, you know this, that's my passion. But counties do not have the same codes authority by state statute that municipalities have. So, I've been trying to get the South Carolina Association of Counties, and Merrill Smith is working on it as well, to give counties the same statutory, um, codes enforcement to counties as they do municipalities. So, we work, we recognize that as a problem, we're working on it. I have discussed with Mr. Mixon many times in the past, I wish we could, uh, combine the codes enforcement, but right now, because of state statutes, we just can't, so, but it is a problem, and we recognize that.
I appreciate your work on that, Mr. Chairman. And then, one last comment, just so the public will know, in terms of the roads, if you are on a road and there is a blue sign, that means it is a private road. If you are on a road and it is a green sign, it is a county road. If you are on a road and it is a green sign and you see a little black sign above it with S and some numbers, it is a state road. The county has no jurisdiction over state roads, so your legislative delegation would be the contact folks for the state roads. We have a very good director, Ms. Karen Hyatt, who is really on top of things and really handles our community in the right way, and I've been very pleased and proud to work with her. But just for information purposes.
Thank you.
The green sign with the block above, that's a state road, and you should contact your delegation members.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.